Yep. Okay, here you go. Oh, wait a minute. I have on the table. Try to get them up.
I brought trees.
Sorry?
About the tree. It's true that we have time in between them and I tend to organize that whole file. Because now we've done a bunch more, you know.
You're talking about the history of our...
What we've done with all the...
Ready?
It's on.
Pardon?
Why do we...
Why would we do that?
Right. To me, it's like done, out of here. I don't want to review it again.
Well, okay, you don't have to, but somebody might need to.
Why?
And, and if something happens in the future, you need a record of the official analysis, like Charles Shawn was unhappy.
We're streaming, guys.
Okay.
Okay.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, we'll call to order the June 3rd, 2025, special meeting of the New Harmony Town Council with the, an agenda of four items: change in various ordinances, presentation by Baker Tilly on comprehensive financial plan, salary of town marshal, discussion and expenses for educational seminar for town attorney, and probably not in that order. So they may even have to amend that order.
I might make a suggestion that just for the benefit of people who might be streaming, Baker Tilly presentation on the comprehensive financial plan is at 11 o'clock. She's going to be here at 11:00, so we will definitely be covering that at 11:00.
Okay.
The rest of the stuff, we can do however.
As we see fit. Okay. Well, I was kind of thinking maybe we would move the salary of the town marshal ahead since that's a quick, hopefully a quick thing, and then also the expense thing. We'll just reverse that ahead of the ordinance. The ordinance would be the more long drawn out. And can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I so moved.
Second?
Second.
We will, any discussion? We will amend that to the salary marshal first, salary for town marshal first, expenses for travel second, ordinances third, and then Baker Tilly at 11:00, regardless of where we're at on the ordinances. All in favor, right?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, first we will call the roll, please.
Pledge.
We can.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't see the pledge on there. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for fixing that for me. Roll call, please.
Jeff Smotherman.
Here.
Rod Clark.
Here.
Connie Winesepple.
Here.
Tom Williams.
Here.
Nathan Maudlin.
Here.
Laura Aronberg. Is she coming or absent?
She will be here. She will be here for the 11:00.
Okay.
On the, she will be streaming.
Yes, she'll be on Zoom.
Zoom. Okay. Thank you.
Or as she says she's going to.
New business, under new business, we are going to start with the discussion that we left out on our town marshal salary. I have, Rod and I looked at the ordinance this morning. It will be an ordinance change if we make adjustments to that salary. But he is at $55,000. He is been employed, I guess, right at nine months, is it right at nine, eight months? But I made a proposal, talked to a few of you about it. I'm making a proposal that we do 3.5% for town marshal, the same as we did for the other employees, so.
Well, we didn't do that to all the employees, but for two of the employees, we were 3.5%.
Did you do that at the last meeting? Okay.
Yeah. None of those required an ordinance change.
Right.
They were all within the realm of it.
Oh, yeah, but she needs to make that adjustment for June.
For tomorrow.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes.
Welcome back in.
Yes. So do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
Motion for 3.5%?
3.5% for Jonathan Desland.
And second?
I'll second.
A motion and second. Now discussion?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I know that when he was hired, he had to do, get that certification so he could do his duties and everything, and then he's got a year to get that next certification, and he's in that process and everything.
He has done everything that's expected of him to do for a certification with the state and all of those things that are asked to be, I guess, legal town marshal or whatever under, what is it called? Tier one, tier two?
Tier two.
Tier two. Patrol officer, police officer, and he is scheduled, my understanding in talking to him last, is September for his
Academy.
The academy training, 10-week training and stuff, so he's on track and he's done everything that we've asked him to do as far as that goes, or what's required of him to do as far as that goes, so.
That's good knowledge for the public.
Yes, 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 exactly.
You know, he's fulfilling his duty so far, you know. I know there's always complaints about doing this more and that more, but
That's...
We're hoping that he will continue to rise to the task, right?
That's...
It's been a learning curve for him.
I'm very satisfied with Jonathan myself, and I know Connie works with him some. We've all worked with him some and stuff. He's new, you know, he's new to the job, so.
Well, he's very, I find him to be very responsive.
Yes.
When something's happening.
You ask him for something or to do something, he's always helped me out in a lot of things too, as far as IT or something, or understanding more what's going on too, so.
Well, and I had a conversation with him about moving down to the garage, so he's initiating the work that needs to be done down there. And he's going to do some of that himself.
In fact, at 9:00, he's meeting the flooring people down there.
Oh, good.
Measuring and stuff to get a quote on that facility, so. Any other discussion or questions? That does come to 3.5% at $55,000 is $1,925 a year, which comes to $56,925, and that will need an ordinance amendment on that, so. All right, all in favor?
So you're essentially amending, moving to amend
I'm moving to...
And increase your salary, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. If you need those numbers, I have them written down, and if you...
I did it.
Okay, good, good, good. Did you come up with the same number I did?
He's got them on the other guys, too.
Okay.
I just got to pull up the notes so I can see that. I hadn't gotten that yet.
All right, next, we're discussing or talking about, Nathan's going for training. You want to enlighten us a little bit on what you're going for?
Aim every year offers a continuing education for municipal attorneys in their annual conferences this month. It's June, the last Thursday, Friday of June, Thursday all day, Friday till noon. Cost is $395 if I'm a member, which is $85, and I filled out a registration, and for that, did Carmen give that to you?
Haven't seen it.
Okay. I'd like to go to that, and it'd be easiest for me if the town would just pay for that if they, if you choose to do that with your credit card, then I can be all registered. And I'm not asking for any expenses, just to cover the seminar.
You don't want any per diem?
You get?
No.
Okay.
Hotel?
No, I might stay with my daughter, or if I stay in hotel, I'll pay for it.
It's normal for us to
It's a Noblesville, actually, this year.
I don't have any problem with this. Paying for all that, too, if you need it, so I'm not need, if you would like to stay in hotels.
I move, approve the expenses and his registration.
A motion to approve expenses and registration, second? Any other discussion?
Who's second?
Tom.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we use the town card to get that done?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'll check with you to... We have to register online, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
All right.
May I ask, Ian, something related to that? Is our credit card only for travel? Do you know that?
That's actually on our agenda.
It is?
It has been to this point.
If you want to just wait on that one, we'll probably get to that later this morning.
Okay.
I know if people have traveled, it has been handed to them for those expenses and stuff. Only that, I think, is what
Okay.
We'll get to it, but it's an issue that the two of them are going to have to get together and figure out what's, because it's a little complicated, but we'll talk about it.
All right.
All right.
I took some notes on the ordinance, so I'm just going to grab it real quick.
Okay. We'll move into the third agenda item, now with the change in various ordinances, or discussion of changes in various ordinances. I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark, who's been ram-rotting this project.
Okay, well, just to kind of set things up and to kind of talk about what I kind of envisioned that we do here today, so I, once we got the new format of our ordinances all put together and everything, I waited until that, but there are a lot of things in our ordinances that just need plain old updated, that are just laying around out there that don't pertain to anything anymore, and there are, so I would kind of put things in different categories, some of which are just kind of no brainers, that doesn't exist anymore, we just need to get it out of the ordinances. Then there's kind of a category of, this probably made sense at one time, what do we want it to be like to fit our environment today? And the third thing is, there'll be a few that are just my personal opinion that I think this is the way it should be and not like this. So, you know, just an acknowledgement upfront, you know? Some of which are, and it's probably the latter category that I really kind of wanted to sit down with y'all and go through these, because I didn't want to just, whatever Rod says, I'm sure is fine, that's not the case. So, so if you've got your ordinance book in front of you, I think the easiest way to do this is just to start, the thing that I sent you by email, does everybody have a copy? Okay. Well, we'll just kind of go through them.
Was that in our box?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll get it, Tom.
Copy in your box.
There was, well, it...
I need a book.
Yeah, bring me a book.
You just had a book, didn't you?
What'd you do?
No.
This is mine. She probably thought it was
I think it would be helpful if you had the book and you had this in front of you.
I had actually gone through the whole thing when I was proofing it and made notes. So that's what I'm going to use.
You may have some of your own comments. Well, yeah, the original draft, I did the same thing with the original draft, but then whenever they did their final thing that actually got published, there were a few things that they changed, but that's all right, well.
Probably may have been from her proofing, too. I mean, we would be, we would be discussing things from when he and I were going through some of these, he would be discussing things that were in there, and I'd say, not in there anymore. That's not in here, you know, so.
Soon as Ian gets back with copies for everybody, we can get started.
I guess my question is, too, are these ordinance amendments? I mean, are we voting on an ordinance? Are we voting on it as a whole?
Well, I think...
I think that, I think some of the ones that Rod's talking about that you might want to repeal, for example, the ordinance that says the town council appoints three trustees to the Fordham, there might be some others that you just repeal.
We repeal, we could do all of those repeals all in one motion.
That can be one motion.
Yeah.
And then amendments, all the amendments?
Well, individually, depending on what you're amending. I think if you're amending the substantive part of an ordinance.
Yeah.
We need to give it two readings.
We used to do this, now we don't, we got to treat that as a new ordinance.
And I would suggest that they, now, if we're just repealing, I'll defer to you whether or not that needs two readings or not, but
Yeah.
I think the other stuff, though, we'll want to, some of it we may want to package together and say, okay, you know, like at our next council meeting, we're going to deal with changes to Title I. And then the next meeting, Title II, as opposed, or we could lump several together.
Well, I kind of agree with that, that, you know, there might be, depending on how many changes there are, we might do one and two, but I don't want to hold up the whole thing.
Yeah, because it can drag on forever.
Well, I intend to work on the zoning when I'm gone later this summer.
Well, I can tell you this, there are, there are two total sections here that I have not addressed, and one is zoning.
Right.
The other is utilities. So you'll see as we walk through these, I'm going to, there'll be places in here where I say, we'll do that one later, because I'm just trying to get all the other, I don't want to say smaller stuff, but cleaned up, and then we'll, and then we'll go.
Okay.
Okay, everybody got these in front of you?
I would like to say something real quick, too, not, and I'm sorry I stepped aside from this, just a moment of thought, for Tom Cochran passed away a couple days ago, I think it was, so he is, was, is a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, too, so appreciate all the service he did for his town.
He was a member of the working
Yes, yes, so he did pass away, so that's prayers for their family. Okay.
All right, so if we start with Title I, and if you flip to 1099 under general penalty, okay, this is probably the thing that we're most anxious to address, I know our town marshal certainly is, so when they redid the ordinances, the old ordinances never really had a place where all of the fees and fines were all in one place, they were just kind of scattered all the way throughout the book. So if you go to 1099 under Title I. How'd it come?
Yep, 1004. Keep going.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Page seven.
So what they did with the new ordinances was, and I think this is an excellent suggestion, in 1099, it basically says, once a year, we will establish what we want our fines and fees to be for the year, and they're all in one place, there's a schedule that they're all put together, and then all the other individual ordinances back later will refer back to 1099. In other words, there's an ordinance against open burning, and it will say penalties for violation will be 1099. Okay? So if you will turn to the first page of this, this is, to the best of my knowledge, and I may have missed one or two, but this is every ordinance that we have that involves, and if you don't, or you do, here's a fine, you know, so these are my suggestions, and I might just run down through them. On the second column is the actual ordinance number that it relates to. So traffic violations, traffic citations, we already dealt with at a couple of meetings ago where we decided that any traffic violations were going to match the counties, so we've already dealt with that one. Off-road vehicles is the OVRs in town, you know, we established it to where there are certain avenues that they have to use to get out of town, 15 miles per hour and everything. I suggest, there was no fine attached to it, I suggested that be $150. Golf cart registration related stuff, if you're driving around in a golf cart that's not been registered, I would assume that our town marshal would probably warn somebody first, but then if they don't get registered or whatever, I'm suggesting $100. So do you, do you want to, you're looking at me like you want to comment, you want to comment one at a time, or are these okay? Okay.
Well, I just didn't know what related meant, because we have a fine for late payment.
That is correct. It's, that's why I said related, let's just make them all the same. Because it costs $50 to get it registered if you're late, it's $25, and then if you're late, it's $50, well, if you choose just not to do it altogether, seems like it needs to be more than $50.
Okay.
But you also, you're referring to violations, right?
Well...
Traffic violations in your golf cart?
I would think most of those fall under traffic citations. If you don't stop at a stop sign, and those all fall under traffic citations. You're supposed to drive it like a regular vehicle.
What about driving down Church Street?
That would be one if somebody habitually keeps doing it.
This is like having it, not having a sticker on your license plate.
Yeah.
That's kind of what this is like.
This is registration.
But that pertains just to golf carts, there are some traffic issues that are
Traffic issues or traffic
He's just saying, no matter what the vehicle, it's the same violation. It's a traffic violation.
Anybody can drive their car on Church Street, but they can't drive their golf cart.
It means similar to a person driving a car on the park, it's a trail, cars aren't allowed.
So that's all the vehicles.
Well, it can be unless you want to, unless you choose to.
This was just golf cart registration related, is what he said, but like, I mean, if you get caught driving your golf cart and drinking, you get a DUI, you get a traffic penalty, you know what I'm saying? Or if you're over the limit, I guess, but whatever. So that would, those kind of things.
This is more
Mostly related. There must be a better word than related that more clearly defines what this refers to.
Violation of golf cart registration.
70.3 is the ordinance, if you want to look at it real quick.
Golf cart non-registration. Do we say, where are late fees? Do we say that somewhere?
That's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's in 70.3.
Yeah, it's on page, yeah, page four, Title VII.
What does, I mean, what page did you say?
Page four of Title VII.
70.3.
Oh, Title VII, I'm sorry. What does it say about?
Yeah, if it's 70, that means it's Title VII.
Somebody that's not from here and not registered, you know, somebody that's, how they bring their carts in and for the weekend and
Right.
Say it'd be the same thing?
They're supposed to come up here and get a temporary
They can.
And what does that temporary cost?
$25, isn't it?
I think.
God, I haven't, I've never done one, but I think. For a year, for a year. I mean, just like somebody that lives here. This is one of the things we're going to put online, so that'll make it easier for people. Well...
I think it's steep.
You think what?
It's steep, 100 bucks.
For not registered, for getting, well, I'm, you know...
What would you suggest?
I'd leave it at $50. But that's all right. I just worry about
If that's an incentive not to even register it, I'll just take my chances. Because if you don't register it by May 1st, the registration fee is $50.
All right.
So if you get past May 1st, you just say, well, what the hell, I'll just roll the dice, and if he stops me, then I'll pay the $50, you know, I mean, it's got to be more than the 50.
You'd feel better about 75?
It doesn't matter. I worry about the tourism part of it, not the local part.
Well, we do require all golf carts operated in town to be
The ones that get rented by the tourists are all registered.
Right.
So theoretically, if somebody brought their golf cart in from out of town.
Right.
They need to be registered with us.
Right.
Or subject to
And if we catch them, we're going to charge them 100 bucks.
I'm pretty sure we give them an opportunity to, you know, to, no, I mean, most of them are not going to know, probably, that dragged them, well, it may be some
Well, they can register, if Jonathan catches them, they can register with him on the spot.
Yeah.
He can take the money and
And that would be a $25.
It'd be 50, because it'd be late, it's after May 1st.
Well, it's a visitor.
Yeah, it's a visitor, I don't know how you
I just worry about that PR factor.
That needs to be clarified probably somehow.
But maybe I'm making
In town, New One.
It's fine, whatever.
Why don't we call it golf cart non-registration?
Okay.
Hey, where does it say that it's the $50 if you don't?
70.3.
Oh, that's what I'm reading.
What it says is that, it doesn't state a number. Says we can do it. Pay an annual registration fee set by the council from time to time.
Oh, okay.
Ah, okay.
And after, the registration fee shall increase to an amount set by the council.
Okay.
We okay with that?
Why would it be so vague? Why would it not have a number there?
To give you the flexibility of changing the registration fee without having to go through an ordinance. Now, if you want to put, add that to this.
To this fee schedule or whatever it is, or penalty schedule.
But it's not really a penalty.
Yeah, it's a fee.
It's a fee.
It's a fee, not a fine. So I teed this up as fines and fees, so we could have a section that is fees where every year, in January, here are the fines and fees for this year, and one of them would be, this is what golf cart registration is going to be this year.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And after April 30th, it goes to
Yes.
And if you make a change, you just make a change on
On this, right.
So, so for the fees, we want to add in golf cart, 25 and 50.
And, and then beyond that, then you talk
Then you have violations.
75 or 100, or whatever you guys decide.
So if somebody from out of town brings one in, and it's not registered, Jonathan say, look, I don't know if you know, but it's got to be registered, and they say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, well, it's 25 bucks to register it.
Yeah.
And, and the reason is, we've got to make sure that it has brakes and lights and that sort of thing, it's a safety issue.
Exactly.
Jonathan knows to tell them
Is that covered in here, guys?
It is.
The out of town, I mean?
He uses code, he uses code when he is
Right. Actually, they have to have proof of liability insurance.
Right.
Yep.
They just can't come to town and
Yeah.
Cause a bunch of damage.
So an out of towner bringing one in, or a visitor bringing one in, $25, regardless of when it is, and that's for a year.
Till the end of the year.
Till the, till the next registration period.
I think that's fair.
And I think you can leave that in the discretion of the marshal.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, you don't want to get too
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to beat them up.
So if somebody says, I don't have 25 bucks, or I'm not going to pay that.
I don't have my insurance with me.
I don't have my insurance, then what?
Well, put it back on the trailer. You can't drive it around here.
Here's where you can rent one that is registered.
Yeah, go rent one.
All right.
Give the explanation of why.
Sure.
Yes.
I mean, that's the marshal's job, it's his discretion.
Right.
Right.
If a guy's being a real jerk, he may decide to give him a fine.
All right.
Or her. Okay, we done with golf cart? Okay. Heavy truck violations, this is a situation where we have, you know, we say basic, and we're going to talk about this specific ordinance, so let's, let's don't go too deep on each one of these, because we're going to talk about them when we get to the individual ordinances. But, you know, so a heavy truck that is off-street, going down one of the residential streets which are banned for heavy trucks, what's the fine going to be? what's the fine going to be? I said two hundred and fifteen dollars, and I know that the county ordinances had stuff for that, so maybe it just matches the county.
But we don't know what theirs is.
Uh, we did. I had it. It's probably in this folder back here. We all looked at those whenever we approved the counties, so maybe we just.
How did you arrive at two hundred and fifteen? Are you saying that is the county's?
No, it was a number off the top of my head.
Okay.
Well, it was a matter of looking what all the other fines are, and look, if it's, if it's a commercial truck, look, it's not like the truck driver's gonna pay it, his company's gonna pay it, you know, it's like, okay, it makes a statement to.
Well, I just wondered about the fifteen, if it was just arbitrary or.
I see we just use whatever the county would be because they have that in there. I actually put the two fifteen down before we decided to do the county, so.
Okay.
Uh, parking tickets. Fifty bucks. Animal running at large. In other words, you got a dog run all over town that's not on a leash, fifty bucks. Animal defecation, fifty bucks. Keeping of hogs and chickens, and again, we're gonna go through each one of these ordinances and look at them. A hundred bucks. Noise ordinance, hundred. Burning a building without a permit. I said five hundred bucks. We don't want anybody doing that. Propane tanks that are larger than, uh, rec, uh, there's, we have an ordinance that says propane tanks can't be larger than, I think, a hundred, uh, or fifty gallons. In other words, it's okay to have a propane tank for your grill, but we don't allow propane tanks in town. Hundred bucks. Open burning, somebody burning leaves, garbage, trash, fifty bucks.
I have a question about that, so I know it's about the code.
Yeah, why don't you wait till we get to the code?
Okay, okay.
Because we're gonna talk about each one of these. These are just talking fines. Horse carriage operators, okay, we require a license to do that, so what's fine gonna be if somebody shows up and just starts driving around town? Hundred bucks. Transient vendors, all right, this one is loaded. We're gonna have a lot to talk about here about this ordinance. But transient vendors, I think originally was written up for like traveling salesmen's, uh, but now it's become very much the code under which we regulate, uh.
Food trucks.
Food trucks, the vendors, the pop-up vendors and all of that kinda stuff. And we got a whole bunch of rules about that that we're gonna need to go through and talk about. The question is, if somebody just comes in and does it, what do we want the fine to be? I said five hundred dollars because the original intent of the law was to keep corporations from coming in and going door to door soliciting things. And a, you know, if you're, if you're regulating a corporation, like AT&T's got a new internet service, and they hire a guy to come in and walk around all day knocking on doors trying to sell their, okay, a five hundred dollar fee to AT&T is not gonna hamper them too much on something like that.
What about Jehovah Witnesses?
Uh, I'm not sure that one, I'm not sure that one's covered under the ordinance. This is talking about selling merchandise and stuff.
What's the difference between?
We're talking about it when we get there. Let's not go too deep on each ordinance. This is just about.
Well, can you just tell me, what is the difference between street and transient?
That's a good question. That is a good one. Ten.
I mean, one's a hundred and one's five hundred, so.
Let, let's make a note and come back to that.
I'm gonna work that out.
All right.
Curfew, uh, you know, we say that you can't, you know, the kids can't be out past curfew, but we don't have any fine or any, you know, it just says you can't do it. I, twenty five dollars. Gotta have something. Uh, loitering, which we'll talk about, which is weird. The only, the loiter, the loitering policy basically says you cannot loiter around the police station.
Do we need that?
We'll talk about it when we get there. I, I think my suggestion is just eliminating it, but in the meantime, it's there, so I said a hundred and fifty bucks. Uh, unlawful firing of weapons within the town limits is a hundred and fifty bucks. And the water and sewer and stuff, let's just leave those alone for now. Those need a little more discussion.
I thought the weapons oughta be higher than that.
Well. Yeah, there's a lot of variations of shooting off weapons.
Depends on.
Now, if you want, if you want, maybe, maybe if you want, I teed it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just set them aside for now, and as we start to go through each one of the ordinances, then we come back and go, oh, okay, I see what you're talking about now. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. So if you turn the page, uh.
What is?
Yeah, I wanna ask, you go ahead first.
Overgrown weeds or noxious plants? I don't see a.
Uh, okay, and the reason I don't have it on here is, is because that's one of the ordinances that I've not chosen to address yet.
Nuisance.
The nuisance ordinance is one we're gonna have to spend some time and talk about. And we're not gonna have time to do that today because that one's gonna need some fleshing out. And Nathan, there's a lot of state law that's going to dictate how that gets written up. What we have is inadequate, but, so let me make note.
We gotta keep that in mind when we're asking our officer to go out and do certain things. If we're gonna have to make it squared up, so we stand behind what he's doing. So I, I understand.
Yeah, let's, let's get through these and we'll get to that one and you'll, we can talk about it.
Well, my question was enforcement of these penalties.
Uh, well, we have told our town marshal, and it is not in the ordinance that gives him that responsibility, but we need to have a job description with our town marshal that says that in, code enforcement is a part of the position.
Well, not, not that. He goes and does his thing, writes him a ticket or whatever we have him give.
A citation, yes.
What if they don't pay?
Goes to court.
And, and we're going to court, state court?
We don't have a town court.
Right, so, or county court?
County court.
County court, that's where it's going. Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And, and there are provisions that say, matter of fact, under ten, under ten ninety nine.
These will too.
Read B under ten ninety nine.
Oh, right here.
Is that, you still under ten ninety nine?
No, I went title seven.
You're there. Title one. The, the ten is title one. Twenty is title two. Thirty is title three. Seventy is title seven. Ten ninety nine. B. What it says is, if I come and give you a citation, every day that you don't fix the problem, the citation applies again. So if we're.
My question is, so a ju, a county judge is gonna uphold this penalty for us?
And the judge will have, and a judge might say, you're gonna, you know, charge you for one.
Discretion or whatever.
But, but the ordinance says that, okay, if Jonathan comes out and says, all right, I'm giving you thirty days, or I'm giving you two weeks to get your weeds mowed, that's a bad example because we haven't addressed it yet. But in two weeks they haven't done it, then he's gonna find them, and every day that they don't get it mowed, he's gonna find them again. That's what the ordinance says.
So Nate, how do we go about bringing that to the county judge?
The marshal, the marshal sends the ticket to the prosecutor.
Okay, okay.
And the prosecutor takes it to the applicable clerk. It's possible that we could prosecute them ourselves.
We had a town court.
Even I could.
We're hearing.
But it'd have to be over there. We don't have court here, nor should we have one.
Okay, so if, if they are written a ticket for.
We talked about that.
Yeah, it's too expensive.
If somebody's written a ticket for open burning, they come here and pay for that?
Yeah.
So how does it work with traffic citations then?
Those are all through the county.
To the, like he just said, through the court, county courts or whatever.
But if they don't pay the fine, then we gotta go.
Then it goes down there.
Oh, so even a traffic?
If they don't pay.
Traffic goes down there, that's what I understand. Traffic goes anything.
It's no different that if you got a ticket out here coming down from the interstate, you know, if you don't pay your fine, then you're gonna get a court date if you don't show up court.
Is that the only one that goes there to the right way of these?
Well, if people don't pay them.
Right, right. Is that the only one that goes there?
So they're paying and everything else except for traffic violations.
Yeah, is that, is that right?
That's a good question.
Time to think about that. So the question is, if somebody gets open burning and we find them, uh, fifty dollars. And do they pay it to us?
Yeah.
I hope so.
And if they don't, then we can.
We have the option.
That's another, another level.
Our town marshal does spend a whole day at court over fifty dollars.
We can play, place lien on the property, kinda like if they don't pay their water bill.
Utility, yeah. Okay.
So it's only traffic citations then?
That immediately go to the courts, right?
They send a ticket.
County, yeah.
Right, well, they're all tickets, right?
Citations.
Citation, ticket, ticket.
It's not, uh, the, I'm not sure we could say we have infractions. Those are infractions. The traffic violations.
Okay.
Generally.
All right.
Generally, those tickets describe to a person what they need to pay this by this amount to this person, or you will be prosecuted.
So do you have another list of fees somewhere that you've done?
Not yet.
Okay, all right.
Because not, not yet.
Okay.
Other than the golf cart registration and utilities, we really don't have any.
Cemetery, well, that was my first check mark, you know.
Cemetery, I, yeah.
Because there are fees all through the code.
Yeah, but we don't have any, yeah.
Well, I'm suggesting if we're going to have a sheet.
I agree.
You know, let's do it.
It's fines and fees. I agree, I agree. All right, title one, turn the page. Uh, title one, chapter eleven. Nathan, need your help on this one. Uh, that is the legal description of the town. My question, Connie, is and/or Nathan, how do we get that definitively now that we know what it is? And are we sure this is what it is?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking up. I may take that what I said about that. We may have to go to the county court for all collection of fines.
You can't just come in here.
The town can collect a fine imposed by the town's court. Uh, the county, we don't have a town court, so the, so the county court has jurisdiction over our fines.
So we get zero money even?
We might get, well, if you remember, when we were talking about a town court, I was talking with some of the other towns, and they get a portion of what is collected, but the county's gonna take some too because.
Well, we, so we're in violation by doing that with the golf carts?
That's a fee.
That's a fee.
Okay, 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 yeah.
This is in, uh, town courts. This is violation of our law.
Okay. So, all right.
Well, that.
I'm still confused about what's a fee and what's a violation.
Fee is what you pay for your golf cart.
A fee is, yeah, a fee is your hookup, your hookup fee to get water.
These are all fines, but you have fines and fees here.
That's correct.
Well, that's what I was asking about.
We'd have another section that is for all the fees.
Okay, so all of these are fines?
Yes.
That's why it's confusing to me.
I know the cop says fees, but I don't have any fees on there. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanna clarify my own question.
Okay, if you turn to page nine in your ordinance book, and the question is, is that accurate?
What chapter are we in?
Page nine. Chapter, title one, chapter eleven.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been waiting, I've been waiting on you to get there.
Have you stepped this off yet?
Now, I did find somewhere down along the line that, and I don't know where I found it, but this was in the dark recesses of my mind, I found somewhere that the town paid a surveyor to come up with that description.
Well, it says.
And it's probably not been updated since it was done.
That was Steve Hahn, because I saw that same document.
Yeah, right.
In two thousand and ten perhaps.
Yes, that's right.
And it probably behooves us to perhaps get that done again. I mean, hell, you could probably, I don't know.
And I have all the legals that I had copied that I gave to REA, and then you have yours, so if we put those together.
This is why over there at the WMI, I got hung up that night on going, wait a minute, I thought that there had to be a legal description, and they said, no, not in the comprehensive plan, but I knew it was somewhere and I got confused. Because I knew it had to be in here somewhere. Legally, we have to have a description of what our jurisdiction is.
So you guys have been diving deep into this with REA, right, so.
They won't, they don't have this.
They don't have that, but could, can you correlate a map that you come up with?
We have a map.
We have that.
So can you give that to somebody that does this and say, write this out?
When did we, when did we include the Parker stuff for the, the firehouse? Was that after two thousand and ten? Remember when we?
I would assume so.
I don't think so.
When did, when did we build, well, when did we build the fire station?
Thirteen and a half years old.
Is that right?
Well, it was twelve when we took office. Twelve years old. It was twelve years old when we took office.
So thirteen and a half years ago would be twenty, yeah.
Well, okay, so twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I didn't bring that stack of papers, but I do have that.
I didn't either.
Not all those.
We have a map, which we are ninety-eight percent convinced this is, the map is the legal boundary. The question would be to have somebody put the legal description to the map, like you suggested, Tom, and I don't know who does that kinda thing.
I, I don't either.
The county doesn't have any.
Seems like it would be a great way to check your map too, I mean.
Well, perhaps the first thing would be the county surveyor, and that is Adam Biggie at this point.
Good point.
Well, I guess the first step is I'll get my stack of paper and give it to you or vice versa, because I, we've gotta put them in a file. They've gotta be here somewhere, some, somewhere. So we have at least all of those legal descriptions.
I don't see where that stuff's in, this description. Do you?
I haven't. I didn't.
No, I don't think that's been changed. I'm sure.
I think maybe.
It's probably not in there.
Probably update.
And it's, and it's important that it be accurate because if you ever wanted to pursue something, somebody could say in a court of law, you don't have jurisdiction. That's not your.
Well, right.
No, you're right.
Nineteen eighty-nine, so all of the stuff that we found needs to be compiled and given to someone.
Well.
Or the surveyor would do it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
In case there's something you didn't find.
Right.
Would the county surveyor do that, or would we need to hire a surveyor?
Uh, we may have to, we may have to hire somebody.
He is not, I don't think he's technically a, a registered surveyor.
This guy that did this with Hahn.
In eighty-nine.
In eighty-nine, what was he, what's his title? PE?
He was.
PE. He's a PE. He's a PE teacher. He does this on site.
Hahn and Associates.
I hope Steve Hahn doesn't watch the video on that one.
He was a surveyor. I think he's retired at this point.
Engineer, physical engineer of it. That's probably what that means.
So we need to.
So there's people that do it, obviously, which Steve came down to Mr. Hahn's place.
That'll be a big bill.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, it'll be a big number, I know.
What's the necessity of it?
Because if you don't have this right and you wanted to pursue something, and you say it's in the legal limits, they could come back in court and say, what are you talking about? My property's not in your town.
We can't just put our physical map in here?
I was gonna say, what about your physical map you say you have that's ninety-eight point five percent accurate, you think?
Well, I think we need to, to define our court boundaries, state.
Well, how did they get the map? How did they do the map? How did they define them in the map if they didn't have something to go by?
They used, uh, tax records and the surveyed pieces of property and some magic.
That, we said, no, wait a minute, you're missing this one, and went down and found it for him, gave it to him, and they said, oh, okay, we missed that one.
Well, there could be stuff that everybody missed, right?
Well, I mean, and that, that was kinda, because you said, when you went to the recorder, they said, no, we don't have that, and then you went other places.
Another office and did, yeah, well, yeah, okay, hang on a minute. I mean, it, it takes some real physical digging through the courthouse to come up with everything.
Yeah.
So, all right, so we don't spend a half an hour just looking at this because we're not gonna get anywhere with it. A, number one, we may need to hire a surveyor to get this legal description. But we'll leave it alone for now, but you can see why it's important.
Do we agree that this needs to happen?
I do.
I do too.
Yeah, I think the, I'm just researching here. It says, uh, eight, ten, nine, three says establish.
You would think the county, they have their boundaries.
Yeah, and they have, they have a map for us too.
Mm-hmm, they do. So really, a surveyor.
Accurate.
So surely there had to be some descriptions to create.
There is, there are.
So are we saying we can just get this from the county?
No, I don't, I'm not saying that.
I think, well, I think.
Possibility.
Yeah.
The, the, the surveyor could.
County survey.
Surveyor.
We've seen it. And it looked accurate to us. It includes everything out there, includes the things we annexed, uh, going towards Eric Karneberg's old house.
There would have to be a description of that.
There is, there are. There's everything.
That's all these pieces.
So the question, Nathan, is would that be a private surveyor that goes in and pulls that, or would the county surveyor be able to provide that to us?
I don't know. I, I think the county surveyor could provide it if they would.
Why wouldn't it? Why wouldn't they?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd much rather just get that than spend a bucket load of money. But we.
Who wants to do that one?
We have to know that it's fairly current, right? I mean, it has to coordinate with what REA's just come up with.
Well, that's what we're saying. We have all the individual pieces of property descriptions, but when you put those all together, that creates the boundary.
It should match what they have at the county.
So who should contact the county surveyor and see if they could give us the legal description? You want me to do that?
I can't, whatever. Who are you contacting? Which one are you going to contact over there?
We'll be county surveyor.
The surveyor? Or?
That's Adam Biggie. And Jonathan was going to call him to have him look at.
P.I.G.
G.G.E.
Okay.
Have him look at one of our streets that, like, five grade coxswain, find out where that ends and see what they've got there.
What would be, I think what you could ask him is, we just need a legal description of the town's boundaries.
I'll ask.
And perhaps he can gain it from those maps.
That exists.
And he might be able to just reference that map. That's maybe all we need.
I'll dig into it. I'll look, I'll follow up on that one, because I was down there looking at the book, so I know where it's at and I could.
So you guys saw a map? Did you see an actual?
They have, they can pull up Town New Harmony, and there was a map.
Because we were worried at one point that some of that stuff hadn't been.
Recorded.
Yeah.
And it had. And then they wrote it all down for us, and we traced it back to the recorder's office, and they said, yeah, there it is, yeah, there it is.
Then they found it when you took them, the descriptions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I was worried there that.
Oh, I know.
Didn't we do that?
Well, right, right, right.
All right, let's move on.
Yeah.
I'll look into that one. Okay, first question I might have, and this is kind of a Connie question, maybe. Okay, so we go from Title I to Title III. Why did they skip Title II?
I don't know.
It's reserved, I guess.
In the old code.
Oh, it was?
I'm asking, some of them are.
Well, okay, it doesn't matter, but.
Do they have an old code?
Yeah.
We go from Title I to Title III.
Tom's got one out of there.
Tom's got it.
This, this one?
The big one, no, the code. Yeah, the whole thing.
The green one. Oh.
That's Connie Wine's Apple original right there.
Did you ever look at it? It's got some tabs in it. Did you ever look at it?
No.
Well, Title II in this. Officers and employees generally.
See, that's Title III here.
Yeah.
Well, they combined a bunch of stuff.
Well, now, wait a minute. I wonder if this is complete, because this starts with Title II.01.
That's the one we got copied down the line.
I know. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter, but we don't have a Title II in our book, and it's just kind of curious as to why.
I have the one in the library. When they, I think you did it over there, didn't you?
Yes, because nobody here could make the copy.
That's what I'm saying, but I mean, that may not have been updated a bunch, I mean, at some point, you know?
I didn't bring my old one.
Let's not, let's not worry about it. I just bring it up as a curiosity. We don't have a Title II. It's like, I wonder why. Okay, Title III. Title III, if you go to, okay, looking at what I, my printout to you. 30.01B, we took care of at a council meeting about three months ago. The old ordinance said that, that we had to provide a written copy of special meetings to the media, and we took care of that by saying it's going to be emailed to the news organizations that have registered. Okay, so that one's taken care of. Don't have to worry about that one. Okay, 1001K. If you go to page four under K, this is our, this is our, our agenda order. Where are you going?
What'd you say, 10?
We're walking through the book one at a time. Yeah.
No?
Yeah, 30. We're under 30 now.
Okay.
Right down there. K. Okay, I'm going to, this is, okay, of the three categories, this is Rod's suggestion, okay? If you look at your printout, what I printed out for you, I suggest that somewhere in here under that part about the open forum, it's a, individuals wishing to speak to council during open forum are required to come to the front of the room within purveyance of video and audio equipment, state their name for the record. Individuals are limited to two minutes. The presiding officer may grant additional time if in his or her discretion, additional time is to the benefit of the council. In other words, if somebody's giving us a great description, and, well, wait a minute, we need to hear this, whoever the chair is can say, that's fine, go ahead. That would be my suggestion, that it, by code, gets limited to two minutes, they have to come to the front of room, state their name, and, and we go ahead and put that in the code.
You'd think it might need to be clarified about question and answering in open forum, because there seems to be, it's a reoccurring thing that we have to, and then they're really upset that we can't answer their questions.
My preference would be to not, and leave it to the chairman's discretion, because there may be times we want to.
No, I understand that, but I think it would be good if they knew in advance that that's not, that's not the forum that we're conducting this, that we're here to listen, not have a Q and A sesh. I think it's widely misunderstood.
Well, it's confusing, because sometimes we, well, we say, I say in the meeting, it's not a Q and A.
Right, you had to do that.
But then they board out a question, or we'll board out an answer, you know?
Well, that's where it shows a foul.
I'd like to be backed up in the ordinance, you know, and we can always, I mean, it can be up to his discretion, you know? But I don't know.
Not that anybody's really reading this before they come to our meeting.
I, I think we need, I hear what you're saying. I think we need to leave it to the discretion of the chair, though, to manage that, because, boy, there are going to be times we're going to want to ask questions. For example, if we're talking about trees, and Guggenheim stands up and gives us two minutes, and then we say, boy, Tom, I got a question for you here, how does this? I agree with you, Tom. I hear what you're saying, but we need to leave it to the.
People are going to feel prejudiced against it.
Well, so be it, it's our meeting, and that's the chairperson's, that's his prerogative. It's our meeting, not theirs.
It makes it tough to answer one person's question and then not the next, you know? I mean, it may even be the next meeting. Well, you let Mr. Guggenheim ask a question and talk to you. You answer his question.
Well, because it was for the benefit of the council.
I think your language is good.
It was for the benefit of the council, that's why you allowed it.
I think it covers what you're.
Okay, okay. Tom, if we can refer back to this to back us up.
It's, yeah, it's for the benefit of the council, it's the presiding officer's call.
And that, I mean, that is a tough, that's a tough chair to be in sometimes, because sometimes.
Well, you just have to say it every time, every time, you know? This is not a question and answer.
This is, you know, there may be things for the benefit of the council, but.
And I would respectfully ask each of you not to just blurt out an answer when somebody asks, you know, or something.
Right, it's hard to hold back.
I understand, it is for me, too. I'm probably the worst one to answer somebody's question.
But you can't, because that's where people get mad, when some people's questions are answered and some aren't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we okay with the language the way it is, and leave it to the chairperson?
I'm not so sure. I don't, yeah, additional time doesn't really mean questions and answers, right? I mean, there's a difference there, Mark.
How would you like to state it?
I would like to state that individuals are limited to two minutes and are granted that two minutes to make a presentation, not necessarily, and not to ask questions.
Well, I mean, it says, individuals wishing to speak to council. That's all it is.
In their speaking to council, they may ask a question.
Right.
You know, I'm here to ask the question tonight, why did you make this decision?
Okay.
Okay, that is, that's a rhetorical question that may, that we may go, well, okay, thanks.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the rub right there.
Right.
You can't, you know, I don't think you can write it for every individual, individual itsy-bitsy thing. It's just going to have to be left at the chairman's discretion.
Or, or you could say, individuals are not to expect immediate answers to their presentation.
I kind of say that.
I don't think that needs to go in the ordinance itself. I think it just needs to be handled by the chairman.
I'll, I try and always say, you know, questions will be answered, followed up later.
And at a point, I'd like to make to, to the public is, look, this is a very open council. Our names, our email addresses are on the website. You know what all of our individual responsibilities are. If you've got a problem you want to talk about, you've got questions, call us up.
Yeah, where we live.
But, but don't come into a meeting and expect us to dedicate 20 minutes of our meeting just to your question. You know, get with us individually, let's talk about it outside of the meeting. That.
I'd say that.
Well, that happens.
I think you have to say that every time.
Yeah, I do, I need to have my little written spiel every time.
Well, and that might be helpful. Then it gets on the record, and it's at the beginning of open forum.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Read the same thing.
Yeah.
Can they move on, or are we okay?
I have a question. Where will this actually?
Well, that's a good question.
Will you do like, number six, and then lowercase?
I think, I was just going to skip it under six, like under, exactly. Open forum.
6.1.
Yeah, whatever. You can help me on that one somehow to get it to where it's proper in the code. Okay, under L, number six, where it says, no absent member may be allowed to vote. I think it needs to be changed to say, members who are durly present electronically in accordance with IC 5-14 shall be considered present, allowed to vote in the same manner as being physically present at the meeting, because it implies that if you're not physically here, you cannot vote. And now we can vote electronically.
You can be seen and heard, right?
Is this the code?
In accordance with IC.
So that's the code that says you can't vote on the budget, you can't fire, yeah.
That's the code there.
Unless you're here, yeah.
So that just states that we, you don't have to be physically present to vote. Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Except, except.
Except, yeah.
I think we need to state it that you can vote in accordance with the thing. This reads that they can vote as if they're here.
Vote in accordance with?
That state code.
I got you.
Because there's not everything you can vote on, right?
I got, yes. 5-14-1.5, 3.5. Okay, good point. 3.02 is our election districts.
Right.
I'm going to suggest this is probably not something that we want to go into in depth today, but it does sort of beg the question, how do we want to run our elections here in town going forward? We have always handled all of our elections ourselves and have had our own election board. Every other town in the county uses the county to run their elections. They have suggested that, Kate Kilgore approached me after the last election and said, why aren't you allowing us to run your elections? Because I'm convinced there's some stuff you're doing up there that's not kosher. I don't know what she meant by that. I didn't go any deeper, but she just suggested that, boy, if you want to make sure your elections are all done legally and, and, now, I don't know what the question she had to say.
Who is she?
Kate Kilgore, county clerk. So it has always been a question that council has dealt with in the past. Do we want to run our own election, or do we want to have the county go to forums? That decision is usually meant about money.
It was $6,000 for her to do it last time, and Carla wouldn't do that. But I think, I think we have to, because I don't think we're going to find anybody that's going to do that much work.
Yeah, I, yeah, in Carla's defense, it was a lot of work.
Oh, it is a lot of work.
There were a lot of election council meetings, and staying up with all the state laws about how you have to do some T-voting and all that.
And you have to get volunteers for, for, for all the, you know, the different parties.
We can, we can come back to that one, but I tee it up for conversation, because we're going to need to deal with that.
Pretty quickly.
Soon or later.
When's the next election?
Two and a half years.
Not soon enough.
So '25, '26, '28?
Be the next presidential election.
Whatever, presidential.
Well, and, and, and then.
It's an off-year, be '29.
Yeah, it's not a presidential.
There's also that question about whether or not we want to stagger our.
Terms.
Our terms. Again, this is not a subject for today, but it's, it's a bigger subject that we need to start having a conversation about, because if we want to have, if we want to have, you know, certain, you know, stagger them to where we don't have a whole new council all at one time, that's something we can think about. Okay.
Okay, so are we changing anything here?
No, that, I was just, I wrote down, talk about this one.
Okay, okay.
30.03, we need to repeal.
Yes.
Where is it? What was it? Oh, here?
Ford Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now, let's see, did we, hold on, the election districts E, there shall be one voting place in each of the three districts?
Yeah, yeah.
That needs to come out.
It, you are correct.
I don't find that.
Yeah, 30.02E.
Right.
You are correct. So we need to repeal E.
Do we, is there a reason we have districts that is, because they're all at large?
I think the answer to that is, and I was unaware of this until I was appointed, the Republican caucus for, and the Democratic caucus for the town of New Harmony is made up of three individuals, one of which from each ward.
Each district?
Each district, or whatever they call it.
The three districts.
That's correct. And so I don't, yeah, and so whenever I went, when I went through that process, I thought, oh, that must be why we have three districts. It used to be, we elected here in town on the three districts, everybody, each district of town had their representative.
Had a poll.
But they did away with that, but I think maybe the reason there still have to be designated districts is because of that.
Could be. You don't know.
Who knows, yeah?
I mean, we can ask Kate Kilgore, perhaps, we'd like to just get rid of our districts. We'd like to just get rid of our districts.
Particularly if we're gonna have the county conduct the election, it'd be a good time to.
To find out, yeah. Exactly.
Okay.
Well, so let's just look at the whole 30.02.
Yeah, the whole, that whole thing merits a lot of discussion.
Okay.
Uh, ignore my note on why do all these say they were adopted 12, 17, 24? Cause I, I gotta look into, I don't know what I'm talking about there. Ignore that. All right. Chapter 31. Now we're getting into HR, we've got a lot of things here to talk about. Ann and I have gone through these and I've solicited her opinion on some things. I would like to suggest that on 3101, we change the word regular to full time.
3101?
Yes. Instead of calling people regular hourly employees, we designate, the, the real, the real designation that we want to have here is the difference between full time and part time.
Those are our only two designations, aren't they?
Is full time and part time.
Okay.
And so, let's, let's change the word regular and call them full time.
Is that defined somewhere?
I've used it by eligibility, 32, eligibility for benefits.
And is that in here somewhere?
Yes, we're gonna get to it.
Okay.
Uh, and then also in 3101, delete the last sentence. All compensatory time must be used within the fiscal year of which it was earned. That causes a big problem if somebody takes compensatory time in the last week of the year during the holidays.
Right.
The ordinance says they can't carry that over. We've never enforced that and it's just, kind of, that doesn't make any sense. So, I would suggest in 3101, we change it to say, full time hourly employees and delete the last sentence.
So if they do build it up, then they will be paid out should they leave?
That is correct.
Who's keeping up with it?
Oh, I do in the system.
On their comp time? What they're billed up?
Is this vacation time?
Uh, it's, instead of taking, being paid overtime, they can choose to take it as comp time, so they can build that up. So for example, if they don't have a lot of vacation, they work overtime, they can use it as comp time, so they may get more vacation.
Are they in comp time at one and a half?
Yes.
Just bear, bear with us. All these questions, hang on, because we're gonna get, we're gonna get to these one at a time. Okay, 3102, which deals with holidays, change it to say, paid holidays for full time employees shall be, there they are, they're listed, payment for these holidays will be at eight hours of regular rate of pay. Because it does not say.
Okay.
So there, so we'll just say holidays to be observed for full time employees, because part time employees don't get any benefits, they don't get paid for the holidays. And we add the word, uh, payment for these holidays will be at eight hours of regular pay. That way, there's no.
Did we update the number of holidays? Didn't we update that last year?
No.
We did not?
Nope.
Do we want to?
There have been suggestions that we should.
We left them the way they were.
There they are, they're listed. What would you add?
Remember last year, they get, we had, somebody gave us a topic in the county.
I gave you that list.
The county, the county observes more.
Yeah, two or three more.
Yeah.
Like president.
Well, they get, they get, they get election day. Personally, and Ann may guess where you, I mean, I think they're fine. I think giving people the election day options.
We're already doing MLK. What, what are the other ones?
Oh, you mean.
No, the other ones that I had, it was like Juneteenth, um, I, let me go find. Well, you, no, don't, don't buy.
Juneteenth, election day and.
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day. Veterans Day? We don't do Veterans Day.
And what I did was just pulled up to like, compared to like Cozyville or something.
I think we ought to be comparable to the communities around us.
But they don't do some stuff like day after Thanksgiving and, and things like that.
Say ultimately, we wanted to add at least one, isn't that what we said?
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that. Maybe you did.
You were thinking it.
I was thinking it, yes, I was. I want to keep the employees we have.
I think, I think these are very standard, I mean, there's others that you can add that have been added in recent years around.
Can we add election day at least? Can we add election day? That's a non-controversial.
I think it is.
Controversial?
I like Veterans Day. I like that more than.
Election day, what, why is election day?
Okay, I, we're not gonna arm wrestle over that. Can we say a Veterans Day then? Can we say that one?
I'm with you.
Okay. Can we put that in?
I'm with it.
I'm all right with that.
Okay, Veterans Day. Veterans Day.
Now, can I just have a housekeeping question? So we talked about anytime there's changes, we do new ordinances and everything throughout the year, then it goes at the end of the year and they update. But we're gonna put some of these changes through quicker, right? We're not in waiting.
They are law when we pass them.
Okay.
It's the physical books and the website at the end of the year. That's when you're gonna have to compile all these legal documents that we've all signed.
Yes.
That's what it is. And that's why it's so important to have them numbered, so you can find them all.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, on 3102B, uh, this is confusing, but if you read it carefully, we need to change the current paragraph to say, all full time hourly employees who are required to work holidays shall receive at, it at twice the regular rate of pay for the hours worked on the holiday. If you read through that whole thing, what they used to say was that any town employee who is required to work on a scheduled holiday is entitled to be paid at double the rate on the regular days for eight hours. And then if they work more than eight hours on the holiday, then they get paid at time and a half. Okay, so let's say it's Christmas Day, we have a big water break, the guys gotta go out, let's say they work 10 hours on Christmas Day. What the old ordinance says is, is they get paid double pay because they're working a holiday, but after they get past eight hours, then it goes to time and a half as opposed to double pay. Ann and I looked at that and said, let's just make it all double pay. I mean, you know, why, even, even, even the hassle of doing the calculation for that, you know, it's like, this is silly, just pay them, if somebody's out there working their ass off on Christmas Day, pay them double.
Tom, are you writing in the actual book there?
If you want to make that argument, if you want to make that argument.
You got time to do it?
Shouldn't be doing that.
No, that's not your book.
Well, he didn't say that, I mean, he gave it to me.
Extend, you know what I mean, after the.
I can assign it to you.
You'd like to make that suggestion?
What book number does he have?
I don't know.
It's in the front. It's in the very front, open, you've got.
Five.
Okay.
Okay, so we okay with B?
Yes.
Okay, 3103A. This is, I'm, this is getting technical, but I'm just saying, health and accident insurance will be provided to all full time employees, cost of said insurance, and then it designates it out by the fund.
The only thing we have to be careful about is, well, we don't have that now, we've got full time or part time, but covered, well, we consider part, full time over 32.
Okay, that's all that matters. So instead of listing out all the different categories of people that get it, you just say, look, you're a full time employee, you get it.
Right.
Okay.
I, yeah, that's.
It's just simplifying.
Well, yeah.
And, and on that, we're gonna get into these names there in a minute.
Yeah.
And it gets messy because we add new categories sometimes and, okay. C, I, I don't care. You're all gonna yell at me on this one, but.
Do you want to say offered or provided?
It's provided.
What if they don't?
AD&amp;D is automatic.
Life, AD&amp;D.
It's, it's just.
And short term disability is automatic.
They're not paying into those?
No.
Okay.
They're not paying into it, so why wouldn't they, Nathan?
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, my suggestion is, look, if it's required by law, then why do we have to say so on C? Because the town will pay the life insurance premium as required by law for all employees listed. I don't, can we repeal that and just do it or does it, or?
Why, well, it was just done in September last year.
That was where I was asking the question. Why do all of these say they were adopted 12, 17, 24? All of them say that.
Oh, that's a good.
Cause that's when the final edit was done. I think so.
They, all of this section says adopted 12, 17, 24 and nothing got changed. We passed.
Did we adopt this?
To adopt this, but if that's the case, every single one of these should say 12, 17, 24.
Well, right. Okay, is it, it's just the employee policies?
I think it's just the employee policies. None of the other ones say that.
Hold on, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Well, why, since that may be, that may be a publishing thing, why don't you make a note to follow up on that one?
Okay.
Because you're the one that.
Is it just this chapter?
I think it's just that chapter.
Yeah, I thought I saw it a while ago too, somewhere.
Well.
No, because remember, I asked myself, I don't know what I was talking about, well, it's cause it was the next chapter, not the first chapter.
Okay, I will, I'll follow up with that.
Yeah, ask about that. I, you know what, I'm okay with leaving 3103C. I'm getting a bit geeky there. Okay, 3105, emergency time off. Uh, I would suggest we just repeal that. It's not saying that they don't get emergency time off, it's just that that's dealt with in the handbook and it doesn't need an ordinance. I don't know why it ever became an ordinance. I mean, there's a big difference between your employee policies and what you put into an ordinance and why we had to have an ordinance that said that they could be granted. Emergency time off.
And that would be unpaid. I'm assuming that then, the details of that is covered in the policy.
I would assume that that would be unpaid unless they chose to take vacation time.
Right.
The employee says, well, I'll take a vacation. Yeah. I think it just needs to be. Yes, yes, exactly. So I think 3105 needs repealing. No debate. 3108A, uh, town council employee shall be reimbursed for the town business which has been previously approved by town council. Okay, basically what that says is, Tom Stahl goes off to a meeting and it doesn't get approved by town council before he goes, when he gets back, we can't approve it. I think we just need to delete the part that says that must be previously approved by town council. It has to be approved. But, you know, so let's, let's say Nathan, Nathan goes to his thing and he changes his mind, decides to stay at a hotel and he wants to turn it in. Sorry, we didn't previously approve that, we're not gonna approve it. We can't approve it because it's in the ordinance as we can.
This, there's nothing in state law that makes us do it this way? That would be the only question I'd have. I understand what you're, or another instance would be if he didn't realize he already missed asking us for approval at the May meeting and we didn't have special meeting.
Yeah, or he gets, or he gets up there and there's a special session that he really wants to go to and it's an extra 50 bucks. Sorry, the way this is written, we can't reimburse.
What if you just deleted the word previously?
That's correct.
Which has been approved by the town council?
Has been though, applies.
I have a pocket of money.
I think you just delete which business has been previously.
And then comes to the town board and says, I want to.
Has been is the future perfect.
We don't have to.
Yeah.
We just say, sorry, we're not, we're not doing that.
He could come in and say.
Has been is not necessarily referring to the past tense.
Okay, what, whatever better way of saying it. Just remove the word previously?
Which business? Which business is approved by the town council? You could just put it in present tense, doesn't matter.
Is, change previously to is?
That'd be good, if you're, if you're concerned about.
Take out has been previously.
Is approved.
Which business?
So we're gonna take out has been previously, which business?
Which business?
Which is approved.
Which business? Which, which business is approved by the town council?
It means we could approve it afterwards if we needed to.
Right.
Or are after.
Or not.
Yes, or not.
Right, or not. Uh, B, uh, Ann and I agree on this one. For mileage, we reimburse, but we don't say at which rate. There is a state IRS approved rate every year and there's a federal one and I, we need to just put in there it's. Now, the state rate is always cheaper than the federal.
Well, you, you do say.
I think the federal rate is 60 cents a mile.
It says Internal Revenue Service.
Yeah, but it doesn't say which one. The state Internal Revenue Service has their rate, the federal has their rate.
They're called the Department of Revenue.
They're not the IRS.
They're not the IRS.
Oh, okay, so that would be.
This is the federal.
So you don't need to say federal.
No, it's the IRS.
Well, he's, he's recommending federal. That's a word.
I just.
Just IRS, right? It might be clear.
Why don't we just put the word federal IRS? There's no doubt.
Yeah.
Say it again.
Lowercase F.
Uh, we need to CGB, but I mean, there are, I, state employees get paid at the state rate.
And it's.
Okay, 3109, here's the credit card thing. Uh, I studied over that for probably two hours. Ann and I got together and talked about it for probably an hour and we both said, this is one that Nathan and Ann have got to do a little research on. Because state board of accounts, what will they allow you to do with a credit card? You guys have got to look into that one. And we'll punt that one to you guys and save it for later. That's all right.
They won't allow us to pay my registration fee by the town, with the town's.
No, we can do it for like travel and education and stuff like that, but one of the reasons you need a card, and I've talked, there, that Janet Alexander that was here, you know, like these guys all of a sudden need batteries or something. So Jonathan can run up and buy some batteries at Dollar General or something like that. And they, state board account is so, they do not approve that. They should keep all the credit cards here, he should only get it when he travels for the training. They've got a bunch of really strict laws about it that I'm like, okay.
Well, one of the questions would be, we could get supplies, office supplies for this office, help a lot cheaper if she could order them on Amazon.
But you can't, the credit card is not supposed to.
So.
So everything has to be paid out. That's the, I know, but I'll have to dig in.
I wonder if that's still the case.
I don't know, you guys.
I'll have to dig into it.
But our, our ordinance needs updated to probably be as liberal as we want it to be there.
She said looking for historic, they had cards they could use. That's the state.
I know, but it's.
We did not have travel cards.
I know, but it's just so funny, every clerk or treasurer that you've talked to that has dealt with some kind of fraud is just adamant about this, you know? How do you know they're not stealing from you? And I'm like, okay.
Well, that's, that's the reason.
That's the reason, right?
Well, yeah, I know.
I mean.
Could we get, for Dollar General, could we get an account with them?
I think we tried to and they weren't open to it.
Because Jonathan can purchase things if we have an account there, he has.
Correct, but I don't think they were willing to do that at Dollar General, I can't remember exactly what it was now.
They have them at the different hardware stores around.
They do like.
They have tons of accounts and they just send bills here and they pay.
In that regard would only pertain to Dollar General.
Look at this guy, we got a big, big ass bird on his shoulder. I mean, a big old bird on his shoulder.
Yeah, that's scary.
All right, well, let's punt the credit card thing for you guys to do further research, if that's okay.
Hey, I want to back up one second, just on the health insurance and stuff. Situation we worry in, we're still in somewhat, we're paying Terry Brown's Medicare. If Anita had wanted to, she could have made us do the same for her.
Correct.
I mean, is, we don't have any policies really regarding all of that, I mean. We say we supply it with our insurance supplier.
Well.
The way we're doing it, but.
Yeah, we could have, but at the point that that got started with her, she was part-time, I don't know if that.
But you're right, yeah, we probably need either a policy or an ordinance that says that once you become sixty-five, you're no longer, uh, health insurance is no longer paid for you, but you're off our.
See, the thing with Anita was, she started her, she was already on Medicare.
Yeah.
She was never on our policy and flipped over.
Well, and that's what Terry, Terry, they wouldn't allow him, they kept pushing him to take Medicare.
Well, I, I think even in a group plan, I mean, C G B, you're off. You go, I mean, you know, the policy says that when you turn sixty-five and most corporations, you're, when you turn sixty-five, you're on Medicare. And there are, in, in, in corporations, I don't think there's any of that reimbursement thing that happens, it's just you're on Medicare. Now, we chose because it was ultimately saving us money to do what we did with Terry, but we certainly didn't have to.
Well, I mean, we, yeah.
I'm sorry, what did we do with Terry?
We're paying for his out, out, for his Medicare.
His alcohol insurance was probably, I don't know, fifteen hundred, twenty, no, fifteen hundred maybe a month.
And now it's three, so.
Now it's three hundred and one.
It's greatly to our benefit to do it.
For the supplemental.
I just don't remember when we did that.
Uh.
Yeah, we had a resolution, uh, but Jeff's bringing it up that, okay, and do we need to have?
That should be policy.
Is that, it, does it, well, the real question is, can it just be policy or does it need to be an ordinance?
It's health insurance. You're providing it. I don't think you need.
No matter what the deal is.
Yeah.
So we just handle it.
Different deals.
That's our policy, this is how we handle it.
We get help and.
That's what it is.
So it can say, uh, well, okay, we'll just deal with it whenever they come up. Okay, now we're starting to get into salaries, bear with me here for a second. So this is one that we've had an issue with because we have so many different categories of employees. Jeff and I went through these, here's what we're suggesting. We, basically, if you go down to the rename part, so we end up having a utilities and streets superintendent. We have a utility streets laborer full-time, we have a utilities and streets laborer part-time, and then we have a utilities office manager. Okay, let's leave that utilities office manager alone for a second. So basically what we're taking is, is all of the outside people, Jonathan and his crew. Jonathan is utilities and streets superintendent. You're utilities and streets laborer full-time or you're utilities and streets part-time. Those are our three classifications. Okay, to do that, then we would need to delete, to delete those positions up above. Where we had water operator, utility, utility laborer, gas street, you know, we add all these classifications and we couldn't even figure out where everybody fit in. So to clean it all up, you got three. You're the superintendent, that's Jonathan. Uh, the laborer full-time would be dual, uh, Terry and Christian, and Robert would be part-time. Okay, and then the other position that we had was part-time office employee.
Let's go back to the other, real quick, not the thing, but, but, uh, they're also responsible for parks and trails, that's not streets. It's not utilities, and it's something that currently, uh, is part of a, uh, budget that Parks Department is needing to get a handle on. Currently, the, the maintenance of the parks and trails are just falling under utilities and streets as far as how it's paid. You've been asking for a budget, do you want? If you want parks and trails separated out and identified, it seems like that needs to be part of their title. I would like it to be part of their title just for the future, because I'm hoping that after the meters are automatic, that there's more time for them to devote to parks and trails.
What would you suggest the title be then?
I, I don't know, it gets very wordy, this is nice and clean, I appreciate that, but they, they're wearing more hats than that.
What if you just called them municipality superintendent, municipality laborer?
Or town.
Town.
It'd just be town.
Maybe something more general is the answer then.
Okay with me.
Instead of streets.
Right.
Is there a reason?
Well, the one, the one before didn't even say streets.
Right.
It, it just called it utility people, and although, wait a minute, they're also running over all those streets.
No, they have gas and street.
In a way, I mean.
And is this?
But.
This one does say gas and street superintendent.
Well, right.
But, but then that excluded from water and sewer, well, sewer's out, but.
Is there some reason from state code that it's laid out this way?
No, I don't think so.
I think it has to have the utility name on it for the pay.
Well, we know, because it, no, because each one says how they, how their pay gets split up. See, I mean, like, you know, it says eighty percent from gas and twenty percent, you know, it says, so whenever we designate these three titles, we would specifically say how it get, so irrespective of what the title is, what you're suggesting is, is that
X percent.
Fifty percent to streets, twenty percent to gas, ten percent to water, ten percent to parks, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
That's what the ordinance is.
We're wanting that identified, you know.
Right, that needs to happen, right.
The question would be, these are merely titles, and then in the ordinance itself, it'll say how they get allocated. But, you know, so what's everybody's pleasure on the title, do you want to go to municipal?
Town.
I just like town, like we got a town marshal.
A town superintendent, town laborer full-time and town laborer part-time?
Yeah.
That's all-inclusive.
Yeah.
And, and then they, then we get away from this idea that they only do X.
Yep, okay with me.
Great.
Good.
Uh, thirty-one thirty then, uh, okay, so the question would be Carmen's position. Uh, I can, let me, let me enlighten a little bit where I'm coming from, maybe we don't need to do this right now. Uh, maybe it can just be, uh, full-time office employee, which is what we have on thirty-one twenty-nine. Okay, is full-time office employee. I can tell you how.
Thirty is a full-time, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Poseville has, Poseville has a utilities manager. And they have a utilities superintendent. Okay? The utilities manager, which is the office person who oversees all of the billing and all that kind of stuff, who has the title utilities manager, then has a billing clerk which works underneath him. Okay, now, we don't have two, we only have one, but I would like to suggest, and maybe this is not something that we do right now, but I would like to suggest that that position here on the inside, given the amount of money that goes through that desk and all of the responsibility of keeping all that straight and everything, I think that position is really almost, from a title standpoint, at least, is about as responsible as the utility superintendent on the outside. And that those two positions, they're cohorts, you know?
Oh, they're definitely.
From a title standpoint, they're cohorts at the same level, it's not a billing clerk, it, it, it has the title manager, because there's a lot there to be managed. Now, whether or not we want to make that right now or make it later, but that's where my theory was, I mean, I know that's how Poseville does it.
You want to give office employee a title.
Well, we.
The question is now or six months from now?
We would not get rid of that part-time office employee.
Right, that's still an option, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, but we could create one. Is there, have you thought about?
We don't.
Job descriptions, so why would you not get rid of the?
Why wouldn't you get rid of the part-time office employee?
Well, I think we want to keep that in the code in case we decide we need another part-time person.
We might want to hire one.
Why would we get rid of it? It doesn't hurt anything.
Obviously, they needed it at some point or another.
Well, that's what they call it.
Okay, well, we can, we can leave it in there, even if it would have anybody in the position.
Right, but it exists in the code in case you need to. But wouldn't you need, so you would need to maybe take this description?
Well, Connie, you're absolutely, Connie, you're absolutely spot on. We need job descriptions for all of these positions, including the town marshal.
Yeah.
You, you know, that's part of the, and, and you don't need that in the code. You, you need it in a job description, you know, perhaps your code, which establishes positions, could say, it fulfills the duties described in whatever.
Right.
The handbook.
In the handbook or the job description or whatever.
We kind of started one, we had a pretty good outline of one when we did the job posting.
And so, you know, both she and I know we need to do that, it's just time to do it.
Right.
So.
Could you add the word any part-time employees?
Any?
Are you still talking about thirty-one thirty-three? Is that what we're talking about?
Thirty-one thirty, oh yeah, thirty-one.
Yeah, but you're going to have part, okay, part-time labor, part-time.
You're going to have town labor, part-time.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
And you're going to have full-time office employee and part-time office employee. Unless we decide to go ahead and change the title of thirty-one thirty to utilities office manager. I would, I would suggest that perhaps we don't need to do that right now, but perhaps that makes a little more sense six months from now.
Six months from now, being the time when they get paid raisement.
Being, being a time whenever maybe we're ready to, uh, get that title as manager to somebody.
Okay. Now I'm seeing her giving that title.
Let me, I don't think we're going to have.
You got to have it in though. And I agree with that, but she's doing, one day can do a thirty thousand dollar deposit.
It's a position with great deal of responsibility. It's, it's always kind of entreated, it's just, well, it's just a billing clerk, no big deal, but it's.
And there's a lot of work that goes around that figure and, well, that really is.
I'll trust your six-month delay for whatever reason that is.
Okay, so, so right now, we'll end up with town superintendent, town laborer full-time, town laborer part-time, and we'll leave thirty-one twenty-nine and thirty-one thirty for now.
Okay. Okay, so can I go back on a couple of things? So you've put a range in here, which I like very, very much.
Hang on a minute.
Okay.
We're getting that right now. Hang on a second, so down at the bottom.
Let me ask back first, are we sure legally? Because the way we're paying and listing that they're coming out of utilities, it doesn't have to be in their title.
It doesn't.
You sure? I mean, I, I was.
Legally. We can call them whatever we want.
What it says here is that we just have to.
And we determine how they're paid. I talked to Judy Rankin yesterday and said, she said, well, it's written in your ordinance. I said, yeah, I know it's in the ordinance, but how did we come up with that? And she said, way back when, someone looked at the budget and said, this is how you're going to allocate funds to pay people.
Yeah.
So that's just kind of one of those, that's the way it's always been.
We, we, we could choose to change it if we wanted to.
That might be an interesting question for whoever helps us with the budget.
So I'm misunderstanding then, um, we're not calling the position utilities and town superintendent?
No, we're calling it town.
Town superintendent? I thought town was just going to replace streets when we were talking about it.
We were just going to say.
I wouldn't be opposed to having those two categories.
Yeah, that's what I was, why I was asking.
Utilities covers.
Take utilities all the way off.
Section of tasks and town would cover the rest, streets, parks and trails.
No, town would cover utilities and everything.
Everything.
That's what I.
Right, well, so you were originally going to leave it.
Well, I.
Utilities in there, I mean, it's what you recommended.
I was completely fine of just making as possible.
Well, I'm like you, I thought we were just.
It catches your category and it catches every category it's.
Yeah, it does. But I'm, I'm with you, I thought we were just replacing the streets.
Yeah, that's how I understood it, yeah.
With the town.
I, I marked out both.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I.
I marked out both just to call it town superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just going to call the whole category town. Sorry, you don't see anything legally wrong with?
All right, so now we get to.
Excuse me, it describes it in the ordinance, where the money's coming from.
Yes. But to come out of utilities, it doesn't have to go to a utility employee.
What it says here.
I think you're getting hung up on the title.
Well, I feel like I've heard that out of this office at some point in time that you had to have that label.
Right.
But I don't know, it's just like you, I'm, just being my mind.
Yeah, because you look at mine, I'm paid out of general fund, cemetery, gas, water, wastewater.
You don't have utility hooked to your name.
Same as you, same as you, you're paid out of different funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know how to come up with, I understand the third, a third, a third, but putting in five percent general fund, five percent cemetery.
And when you call them town, it's all town money.
Yeah.
Right?
I got you.
You win.
Okay, so, once we've established our categories, which is what we've just went through, I thought this was rather brilliant and I would like to suggest this, so, well.
Who'll be the general?
Poseville.
Poseville.
Poseville basically does this annually. So in the January meeting, they basically say, this is our salary ordinance and this is, this is our ordinance for the year. And instead of embodying it in the ordinance itself, it just becomes an issue that's dealt with annually. So you're not constantly having to go in here and change the ordinance every time you get outside of a range.
It's the same idea.
You just establish your range at, this becomes.
Yeah.
An ordinance.
Same as this.
I do have a problem with the deputy.
Well, he's talking theoretical here.
Well, these, these are my suggestions.
No, 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 minimum and maximum, you got to reverse.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right, thank you. So.
So the deputy should take the minimum?
And, and, and I will tell you this, Poseville's ranges were pretty broad.
Yeah.
You know, so you're not, you're not, you just keep them broad, you just throw them out there so, for example, our town marshal, forty-five to sixty-five, the deputies are twenty, twenty-five, the unit, okay, so this would be like Jonathan's position, this is going to be called town superintendent now. You just establish it right now, twenty-five to thirty-five, we, you know, and uh, this in the ordinance is how they were paid in the past, paid bi-weekly, thirty percent from gas, water, wastewater fund.
There were a couple mistakes on yours, so I've written them down and given it to you.
And, and, you know, you go through them all, then it, you know, there's the clerk treasure. Now, the clerk treasure, I think, is one that we would have to deal with every year and so, but at the January meeting, whenever we approve this, then we would establish what that's going to be.
So it cannot be, you don't think it can be a range?
Well, it can.
The clerk treasure?
That one is so tricky.
I suppose it could be, but we would have to decide every year, but clerk treasure and town council members, every year, you're going to decide what you're going to pay those people for that year because they're salaried.
So is town marshal.
I mean, that'd be kind of like saying, well, couldn't you have the town council members be a range?
I think it's because they're elected.
Yeah, they're elected.
Not because they're salaried.
They are.
I know, but town marshal's salaried too, so.
Yeah, but he's not elected.
That's what I'm saying, I think that is because they're elected, not necessarily salaried.
Oh.
It would seem to me that we would have to have a hard number there every year.
Well, and that's what they've told me, they put a hard number in there every year, because let's say you guys all went out, a new council came in and they said, okay, we're going to take your salary down to forty-nine or something like that, they cannot do that, that's why they keep it in there. And they keep it that flat amount, and that's why they were doing all that, um, seniority pay and all that kind of stuff because they didn't want to up it, but my feeling, and I could be totally wrong about this, I understand if you've got someone in there, you're never going to take them back, no matter who the board is, but if a new board comes in and there's a new clerk elected, you've got someone that had been here thirty years, you could start them at.
Yeah.
A lower amount.
Yeah.
It's not ever taking that new person, I mean, the existing person back.
I don't know.
I, that wouldn't be mine.
It'd need to be spelled out.
We did look at that once, didn't we?
We looked at that a bunch, yeah.
I think it would be helpful.
To just set them, say what it is each year for the clerk.
But do you need to write up that stipulation, like?
Right.
You know, if you got a new clerk, you could go below that number, I don't know if we can do that, I don't, I can't.
There is code, there is an anticoat on that, I know. There is code, there is an anticoat on that, I know.
Well, well, well.
But it is, if you, for your recollection, is that you could say the clerk gets eighteen thousand dollars a year, office manager gets something else, and they could be two different people.
Yeah.
Which is what that one town did.
That one town that we looked at at the case law.
Right, right, right.
Oh, that's a good point.
So what happened was that the clerk lost the election, the new one wanted to be paid as clerk and the manager, and the town president said, no, you're just clerk, you get eighteen thousand a year.
So the clerk was a hired position, the other.
No, it was elected clerk.
No, they're elected, the town in that.
Oh, the town manager was the hired position.
The town clerk, they had two, they had a town clerk, each town has to have a town clerk.
Which one was hired and which one was?
The office manager got paid a lot more.
And she was hired?
Yes, she was hired. And, and it was, at one point, the town clerk and the office manager were the same person.
Right.
So she got like forty thousand plus the eighteen.
Right.
Then a new person became clerk. And she wanted both.
She wanted the same deal.
And Jeff Smotherman said, no, you're clerk.
Right.
Give it eighteen, and we're going to keep this person as office manager who used to be clerk. And the court said, yep.
Right.
So, but that would be breaking it out, and we decided not to.
But the difference is elected versus hired.
That's one, that's one difference, but also how you, how this particular board decides to define what the position's on. And you decided not to do that.
So let me, let me just, as a general question, do you like this approach? That at the beginning of the year.
I do.
Ordinance number one for the year is to set the fines and fees for the year.
Right.
Ordinance number two is to establish our salary for the year.
If we, well, okay, so we will do that every year, or?
I think it's done annually in January every year. And these are all established.
It could remain the same.
Oh, okay.
Some years, we may not change it, you know, so yeah, that's fine. You know, the ranges are still fine, okay with that?
Yeah.
And is everybody in a general sense, okay with the ranges I've got there?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Well, I mean, you know, we can argue about those.
Um, just one, this is always an argument, but if you've got a laborer, they're full-time or part-time, they're still going to be doing the same job, there's always that argument that a part-time should have the same hourly rate, they just work less hours.
That's not an issue in our situation.
Okay. Because they are doing different jobs, which would help with the.
We can talk about that later.
Okay.
Yeah, the skills required, wouldn't be.
Well, okay, on that in general, okay.
There's just a few notes on some of the changes I caught.
Thank you. All right, thirty-one forty-five through thirty-one forty-seven, okay. Nathan and I sat down and talked about this one and several others. So my question, my fundamental question is, okay, when we have issues which are obviously mandated by either state or federal law, sometimes, obviously what they did here with the nepotism policy is they took the whole damn thing and just plunked it into our ordinance. In other cases, they didn't do that, they just kind of said, well, yeah, we have this policy and we're going to abide by this. My interest or my preference would be, instead of having ten pages of your ordinance taken up by the nepotism policy that was passed at the state level, instead, we just have a simple paragraph that says that we maintain a nepotism policy in accordance with I C code X Y Z and be done with it. Otherwise, you're just clunking up your ordinance with ten pages of something that I'm not sure you need at all in there. Nathan and I have talked about that, he thinks that's fine to take that approach if we want to, to keep your ordinance.
What does it hurt though?
It, it doesn't hurt, but sometimes you're doing it, sometimes you're not.
What do you mean by that?
Well, there are some, like the nepotism policy, and I don't remember what they are.
There's lots of codes that are cited in the, in our, lots of statutes that are cited in the code, and we don't print the whole statute.
We don't print the whole thing out.
Like in accordance.
Oh, of other things, yes, I understand.
The town board, what's your powers, we don't.
Well, yeah, one example might be, uh, the parks department. So, you know, we say that, you know, our policy is, you know, our, in accordance with this, but we don't list the whole damn thing.
No, I understand.
How do you know, it's like, you're just clunking up your ordinance of a bunch of stuff that nobody's going to read anyhow.
Well, does anybody think that maybe, especially about nepotism, it's good to have it as a physical part of our code?
Well.
I don't know.
I'm, okay, so I want to remind you of this. We all on council members are supposed to sign a nepotism policy, did we do that at the end of the year last year?
I believe so.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So we are reminded of it every year, whenever we sign the policy, that we say, okay, if I don't know what I'm signing, then I probably need to go find the state code and read it.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
So are we okay just rewording that in a manner that says that we have the policy, we will adhere by to it?
Yep.
Okay.
You could put the nepotition, nepotism, nepotism policy in the handbook.
Okay, yes.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Good idea, yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, so if you flip over to page, now we're in chapter thirty-two, uh, which starts on page seventeen. Thirty-one zero zero one through thirty-two zero zero seven needs to be repealed. That Department of Economic Development does not exist.
Sorry.
I don't know if you've all read through that before, but. It says that the town economic development commission shall exist of three members to be appointed, one member by the president, town councilor, one, and it also involves members of the county commissioners. You, you know, it's just, it's something that apparently existed at one time and it doesn't anymore.
Now, don't we, aren't we going to need that if we do redevelopment district?
That'd be a redevelopment commission.
Okay, and it has nothing to do with this, you're sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So I'm going to suggest we repeal that.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? We've been in here for two hours, could we take a quick break?
Well, yes, we, well, we're going to take a hard break in about fifteen minutes because she's going to arrive for eleven.
Okay.
So I thought we might get through fifteen minutes and then take a break.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Whoever needs a break.
Thirty-two oh two now deals with parks and rec. It says that it's pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six ten dash three dash three. That needs to be changed to thirty-six ten three dash four. Three dash three is county parks and rec departments, three dash four deals with towns. So they've cited the wrong code there.
Okay. So you have all these written hard somewhere, right, Rod, and you'll make any changes? So this will be a living document that you will date every time to.
I will do my best.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, this, now, this is an example of one.
That's correct.
That could be done, um, probably in a meeting, because this was a typographical error.
That's correct.
So you don't have to go through, you're not changing the ordinance.
Okay.
You're just correcting an error, so we could, you could do this if we have others.
If we have, if like, I find out that the, the attribution of when it was passed, that twelve, seven, twenty-four, whatever, that would be just a typographical error too? You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Be the one that's done, yeah.
All right.
It probably is.
All right.
It's more of a publishing error than a.
Yeah, that should just.
Is that a different thing than a typographical error? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
It's, it's an error, so I don't think it'd be a difference between a publisher.
So that could all be done at the same time, is what I'm asking.
They're the publishers, they shouldn't be making that kind of error, that was not adopted by the town.
True.
That's the date that they did it.
Right, right.
Okay, thirty-two.
Is that what we think?
I don't know, I don't know.
Thirty-two oh two oh, I am suggesting, and let me, let me read this out loud. There is established as a part of the governmental organization of the town, a parks, a Department of Parks and Recreation, which ties back to what the state code calls it, okay? Which shall be referred to as the Parks and Trails Board. Okay, we struggled with this because we wanted to include that in the title, this would get that job. This department will oversee the public parks and assets of the town and it shouldn't say and assets of the town, it should say oversee public parks.
And it's, and their assets or something, the, the parks assets or trails assets, I guess.
Oversesee the public and furthermore should include, okay, well, let's just and assets of the town, take that part out.
Susan Cowan is here for a meeting, is she supposed to be in this meeting?
Oh, Susan? Yeah, ask her to come on in and we'll be with her in just a second. So we can probably break early and. Hi, Susan.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
We are digging through some ordinance stuff and we'll take a break here in just a little bit, okay?
Sure, no worries, that's fine.
This, this might be a good time to take the break, but, okay, so we're going to rename it the Parks and Trails Board. Uh, this department will oversee the public parks and shall include oversight and maintenance of the town's trails. How's that? Okay, all the duties and responsibilities of thirty-six ten dash three dash four shall be vested in the Parks and Trails Board. Its members and officers shall be given a copy and are required to read and understand the duties responsible contained herein. Okay, here's the problem, or one of the issues here. This is, this is one where there's a whole, we cite that we're going to do everything that thirty-six ten dash three dash four says. Okay, but then in our, but we don't include all of that in the ordinance. If you, if you go to your book and you look at your book, uh, you'll notice under thirty-two oh twenty-three, turn the page, we start to spell out the powers and the duties of our parks board. That is not consistent with what the state code says that their powers and duties are. So this is one where you can either take the whole damn state code and plunk it into our ordinance, or we can just say, we've established a parks, parks and recreation department, because that's what the code calls it, we're going to call that the Parks and Trails Board, and they shall fulfill all of the duties embodied in thirty-six ten doc four.
Which is the Parks and Recreation State.
That is correct. And Nathan suggested that you go ahead and say, and all members of the Parks and Trail Board get a copy of thirty-six ten dash three dot four, so they know what the hell it is they're supposed to be doing. Because this, you know, this goes through A, B, C through G, there's a whole bunch of other stuff in the state code that it references to that aren't listed, so it's confusing.
Is, okay, does the state code embody all of what's in here now?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's more.
Okay, okay, well, I think that's fine.
But there's more, so instead of just plucking it all down in the code and doing kind of like the nepotism policy where it takes up ten pages.
Okay.
You comfortable with that, Tom?
Yeah.
So now our code gets pretty brief, it's just two paragraphs about the parks and trails, and they all get a copy, so they know what it is.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Is this a good place to take a break, or?
Yeah, probably.
Recession.
Okay. Uh, for, well, yeah, we'll make a motion to recess and anybody who might be tuning in, uh, what do you want to say, we'll reconvene at?
One.
Well, Laura was diving in at eleven, but I can call her and tell her, hey, we're going to start early.
That's only twenty minutes.
Want to take a twenty-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll reconvene at eleven.
Yeah.
I move we recess until eleven.
That's what we were going to do. We have a move.
A second.
All in favor?
Bye.
You sure you don't want to sit down through all of our terms of code?
It's a lot of fun, it is a lot of fun.
I'm sure it is.
Nathan, how much of these notes?